Okay.
Thank you. So if we modify a current ordinance to include such a property, what type of permit would said individuals, business entity, need from the town? What would they need from county? What, would there be inspections required, et cetera, et cetera?
Currently, the uses that we listed on the first slide, tourist home, bed and breakfast, the commercial, like the hotel and things.
Okay.
Those would require a use and occupancy permit from the town. And then you need another one from Frederick County.
Okay.
And the determination, and this is where you get into the definitions of, if you're renting out most of your building, or all of your building, as a tourist home, or a B and B, or whatever, it seems to me it's commercial. So, we tried that route in this case. And the Frederick County regulations required an architect's drawing of the interior and things like. They were probably... But their regulations are their regulations. So they're the ones that would have done the safety. We don't do safety inspections.
That's why I was asking about county. What county requirements are in place?
Right. So, but they start with us. We make a determination. I said, "Yep, it's either a bed and breakfast, or a tourist home." And, you know, "You're okay with us. You need to go to Frederick County and get their permit. And you have to start here, or they won't even talk to you." So, anyway, that's where the sort of line needs to be drawn is, is it just your neighbor that's renting out one room while they're there? Does that become a commercial thing? Or, does this thing fit into our commercial existing categories that just probably needed to be tweaked? And another issue that, or another aspect of this came up. Somebody was thinking about that yellow house on Main Street, next to 22 East Main, and said, "Oh, I could buy that and put it on Airbnb." And it's like, it's not just that simple. You know, you have to... And not live there. So, what is that? It's your neighbor renting something out on a every-two-day basis. And I just think that people should also consider what it would be like to live next to something that was not...
Yeah, that's more, that's a more extreme scenario. I mean, but me, it's every semester.
And that's a long-term rental. And those are predictable people for those six months.
I still get new neighbors, you know.
Well, but I'd live next to Gettysburg College, so I know what you're talking about. And those people change every year, or every semester. But they're predictable. I know, but for all I know, somebody could be renting out a room or a couch on an Airbnb site. You know, there's always extra people going in and out of those things. And it's not necessarily... Another topic that came up at the planning commission, by the way, is this...
Was this the permit piece, or?
It's not necessarily allowed by homeowners associations. Sort of a permit connection. But anyway, as far as permits go, the town...
Sure, sure, sure.
We have our commercial set of things. And I try to fit it into a category and send it to Frederick County. And what happens after that, that's who would do the inspections.
Okay. Ms. Buckman?
How did we come up with $100 a day fine? Where did that come from?
I'm not sure what the exact dollar amount was. But if somebody is, is running in this, and this is really not the place. This possibly should be at the Board of Appeals or something, if somebody differs with...
I'm not differing. I'm wondering where we came up with that amount.
Is that in the, is the $100...
I'd have to see the letter, again, to see exactly what it said. It's been a while ago, that the letter was written, and what the dollar amount was, and where we made that determination. But without having the backup information, I, I'm not 100% sure. I'd be more than happy to look it up and let you know.
Thank you very much.
The content of that letter, as well as the price, as, as well as the violation fee.
Sure.
I'll look, I will look into that.
Thank you.
Ms. Henry, you seem, you have a comment? And remember, to the board.
Yes, and I waited here all night to, and I appreciate that I'll be given the right time, because this will be my third month that I'm here, talking about the same issue. I truly want the commissioners to take somewhat seriousness. My house might be sold tomorrow, whenever. I don't have to deal with this issue anymore, maybe? Or, or come back here and, and, you know, put up with all, you know, the... This is very, to me, is almost like, this person, the staff person of the town, is making their own assumptions about what could happen and not happen. And all of this up, you know, going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. It's almost like a joke, and it's like, nobody's taking responsibility. And I want to tell you this before I go home and tell you. I have already gone to Frederick County. First of all, I have no idea why the town of Emmitsburg and Frederick County doesn't go alone with the Frederick, with Frederick, Frederick City regulations, Airbnb. Why do we have to go to New York? Why do we have to go and look at all the things? Why don't you go to the, to the Frederick County, uh, city? And see what they're doing? What is Frederick doing with Airbnb? And how to address it?
Are they allowing it?
How are they allowing it?
Is Frederick, is Frederick City allowing Airbnbs?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay.
And I, and I, and what I wanted to tell all of you is that I had a conference with the people that have to, they have to, they're the ones who say, that, you know, the planners there. And, and they couldn't, they couldn't believe what the, you know, what the planner here have, was saying to me. And the regulations that they put in on me. Because Frederick County was not put in any regulations. They, they, they only said, "The safety regulations will, will apply." You know, and that we have no, no ordinance for this matter. And, and you're, and actually, the words was like, "You're good to go." I thought I was good to go, but I'm not good to, you know, but all this time has been happening. And nobody have taken the responsibility to actually address this and say, "What are we gonna do about this, about this issue?" Okay, most of the people that have Airbnb, you know, are responsible homeowners. Okay, that, that are not even compared to the people that are renting to the Mount Kits, that are, that their house being this, you know, trash, or any of that. So, and, and I'm not, I'm not one of these people that I'm going to allow. And like I'd say, I've been in, in town for 20 years. And my neighbor's been the same neighbor since. Actually, he's been here more than that. So, uh, you know, and have never, ever complained of anybody in my house being, you know, because, because you have your own rules. Of course you have, you know, and you have a set of circumstances that you, you give to these people. They don't just come to your house and, "Hey, it's yours." All right. Thank you for listening.
Sure. Mrs. Henry, thank you. I, I'll, I'll address some of the, the points you made. I'll try to. In my view, the board is amenable to what you're offering. I mean, basically, we're, we're obviously absolutely willing to hear what you have to say. And I think the board is fairly open-minded to the process of considering an Airbnb-type operation in town. I think what you're hearing from the board so far, and I'm not going to speak for my colleagues here, but it sounds to me like you have a group here that seems tolerant of it. Now, the other piece is, there is a process that we have to follow. We're bound to it. It's a, it's a transparent process by law. And I think that, as we move through this process, the issues that we're running into don't directly relate to you, the individual, or you attempting to have your Airbnb, but rather, this is very new territory. And you'll notice that most municipalities are watching it pioneered. And as a result of that, we're trying to make the best steps for the whole community, including the individual property owner who wants to do this, and the property owner who doesn't want to do this. So, it, it might seem perhaps, you know, from your perspective, that we're indifferent, or ambivalent, or not caring, or not active on it. But the, the reality is, we, we have to sit and direct the process. And, and there is a process. And I, I wish it were faster to satisfy everybody. But unfortunately, the reality is, there are a lot of variables that we're weighing. Now, related, related to town staff, our role at this point in the game, where we're managing these issues, is we're hearing from town staff what they're bringing forward. We're not talking about specifically the regulation that you encountered, deciding whether that was equitable, or just, or appropriate. We're, we're dealing with the bigger picture. Now, I would imagine in this process, we will get down to that. And I think there will be some discussions related to that by board members, by staff, by the mayor, by another commissioner who's not here at the moment. But that's not, that's not where we are at this moment. Where we are right now is we're weighing how to move, how to move forward with or without a home-sharing component in our town ordinances. So, so that's where we are. Now, in my view, turning to the board on this issue, I really like what you guys are talking about. And I like the fact that we, we had, you know, the presentation. I really feel for both long-term rentals, like what Mr. Rich is dealing with, with the, the student population, or any population, you know, anybody renting a home. I would love to see a permitting process for that, where it's a standardized thing, where we emphasize the health, safety, and welfare of occupants. And, and I think that's the direction we're going in as a board. It, it sounds that way to me. Commissioner Sweeney, in agreement with, with what Mr. Rich said, you bring up, "We don't need to rewrite every ordinance. We don't need to go into a whole new territory with this. We need to just modify what we have." And, and I agree with that. I think simplest is the best. Okay? The other side of it is, you know, what gets brought to the board is sometimes that worst-case scenario for consideration. But we also want to be optimistic. I mean, the reality is, the streets of Emmitsburg are open to any, any person who chooses to be here. We are a tourist destination to some degree. And, and that means we will, you know, hopefully host great people. But certainly, we don't always have great people who visit here. So, we do have to be mindful of that. In, in my view, I would like us to pursue some means of permitting this, some means of regulating it through that permit, and, and have a transparent process to get there. Now, what that process is, I'm not sure yet. But that's, that's kind of where I am on this. So I, I hope you guys, you know, I hope I've been clear where I'm coming from, if that helps.
Yes.
Okay, so moving forward, we want to give direction to staff. Mr. Sweeney, anything on your mind, or Mr. Ritz, or Commissioner Buckman?
Give direction to staff to...
To what?
Investigate the permit process? Or, look for, look at what Frederick City is doing? I mean, I think that would be a, a very specific act we could ask them to weigh.
Can we have Frederick City maybe come make a presentation on how they're doing it, or just...
We could invite them, but the reality is, I don't think they would have that luxury of time. I mean, they can certainly say no to us, but...
About the other man, the man, the liaison that comes up to the, been he doing?
Which liaison? I don't know.
I don't know which ones.
Roger Wilson.
A Roger Wilson baby?
He's with, he's with the county executives, and he's not, I think he's, is he an alderman now, or?
He is.
So, yeah, I don't believe that he'd be available.
But we could direct our town staff, the planner, the planner's office to, you know, or whomever staff designates, to, to find out what they're doing down there.
We had the town Frederick City planners, Frederick County planners come here before, right? Then they come up here and present...
That's the county.
County, yes. Frederick City, no. And it's Frederick, it's Frederick City who is allowing the Airbnb, or the, the house-sharing thing. So I keep on saying Airbnb, but it's the category, not just Airbnb.
Could we get them to see if they will come up?
Sure, we can invite them. And if they're unavailable, ask staff to...
The planning zoning does not know what to do either. I've heard from all the planning zoning staff, they're, they're, they don't know what, they don't know which way to go either, except for they like to have somebody there all the time, or somebody managing the place.
Sure.
You know?
Could I say something?
Mr. Rich? Are you okay if Ms. Sibley adds something?
I was gonna, I was, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Just on that point, one thing that the planning commission has been doing is, they've been doing research also. And we have compared with towns in Maryland that are more our size. I mean, city of Frederick is even kind of bigger. So we looked for communities, and it may be helpful if I gave you some of the reading material just on your desk, that the planning commission has had, and some of the sample ordinances. But I'm perfectly willing to, um, I think I did look up the city of Frederick at one time, and, and I can't remember that result. But some of these smaller communities might be a better fit.
Sure, sure. I, I think what we're looking for is to see where it's functioning, and to see how well it's functioning. So we kind of get the, the notion of, we, we know the no-tolerance model. And it's an underground economy there. If we can make it more visible, perhaps we can make it safer. And the other piece would be, if Frederick City is moving in that direction, it would be interesting to see how they're doing it. So...
And what I also...
Is that sufficient, do you guys feel?
Yeah, but I, I was gonna address something entirely different. What are we doing in the meantime? Like, Ms. Henry's not doing the Airbnb venture, correct?
Correct.
So we have to leave it at that until we come up with something here, and it makes...
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean...
I didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry, Ms. Sweeney.
I don't know how we could stop her from doing it when we don't have an ordinance on it yet.
Well, according, I mean, we have conferred with John Clapp through this whole process. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last letter that she received told her that she could continue as long as she did the parking spaces per the code. So we weren't saying that she couldn't do the short-term rental, but there is a part of the code in the Village Zone that requires, and this is per John Clapp as well, designated parking, paved parking spots for her to be able to do that. And if I recall correctly, that is the last letter that she received from us, that that is what she needed to do. And then, you have the planning commission that has come and said, "If it's not an allowable use, and it's not in the code, it's not an allowable use." That was also John Clapp's recommendation. So that's, that's where the, the problem lies, is the direction that town staff needs, whether it's through an ordinance change, designating as an allowable use, or not. And that's kind of where town staff is right now.
So if there are ordinances that we're going to alter, I guess we need to see those ordinances, and, and work with them at, can we call another meeting this month, or?
We have one already this month. We have a second meeting this month already.
Can we get those ordinances together so that we can look at those and make some determination? Because it's sort of up in the air now.
We certainly, well, we can certainly look at those ordinances, yes. I don't know if we have sufficient information to make a decision, however. If you would want it to be an agenda item, we could put it in front of the board. The board would say yes or no. We would vote on it. And if it were an item that you wanted to see as an action item, okay, as opposed to a discussion item, we could also have the board, you know, put that into the vote. And I think the board would probably be amenable.
What you would need to do is have, direct staff to draft an ordinance, but then it would have to go to the planning commission.
This is just talking about reviewing for... So, the next step is what you're hearing from Ms. Willetts.
Okay, but we need to see what the current ordinances are.
Correct.
And look at those, and see how we'd like to direct staff. Right?
Yep, um, maybe I should have them in their books, right? But I don't know which ones, which specific ones that we would need. Do you know, is there a specific ordinance for this?
Like the bed and breakfast ordinance, making alterations?
I have the materials...
Can we modify or change?
I have the materials that I created for the planning commission, in which I took the excerpts of the ordinances that applied to overnight stays of a short nature. And I took, you know, excerpts from other people's ordinances. And they just weren't in a position of being, they had not been asked, and nor had I, to revise an ordinance, to... So they were in a position of trying to look at something that is not currently allowed in the ordinance, unless you are willing to consider yourself a tourist home, or a B and B, or one of those categories. So, any of the other types of these things are not in the ordinance. So, if you would like more information, I can provide you with the materials I gave to the planning commission before you decide whether you want to...
I have to know that.
That would be, that would be advisable. Yes, please. So, does that help the board?
Well, it is, once we decide, when drafted ordinance, they will go back to planning.
Correct.
And then they can look at it, and if they have any changes, they do it too, but...
Correct.
I have a question for this thing, too. The property, the 113? It, it doesn't have a blacktop, they have, she's, you said, you stated that you had five or six parking spaces already? But they're not blacktopped?
Yeah, they're not. But do I, that's, that's...
Well, I, I still didn't understand it, because I know you said you had them, and then it...
But why do they have to be blacktopped? I mean, I, I have one, one stone block after another, after another, and this is the way, this, I, I was never allowed to, to, I was never allowed to continue my work. And all this talk, I see that there is no ordinance for this particular thing, because, so, the ordinance have to happen, and that, but if there is no ordinance, I should not have been punished, punished for not, not continuing to do the Airbnb out in my house. And just shut me down completely. I have the parking, I have the safety, I have, I, I had everything. And everything was not enough. It was never enough.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ritz?
What is the ordinance state?
Code says it has to be paved. And that's what staff went by, is what the code said. I mean, that's what we have to follow. Town staff has to follow the code that's in front of us. We don't have the luxury to interpret it how we want to. We have to follow it. And that's up to you guys to determine whether or not you want to change your code.
Code for a what?
Paved.
A code for a, needs to be paved.
A code for her to have five...
Commercial site, or for...
For, we've found, and I conferred with John Clapp on this, found a place to fit it into the ordinance so that she could have her thing. Either, we called it a, at first it was bed and breakfast, then she said she wasn't doing food. So we called it a tourist home. And either one of those requires a paved parking in the back. And I also, it needed, it needed a use and occupancy permit. And it needed a change of use from being a residential house to being a tourist home.
So we would have to make a new town code if we were going to make a new...
But I'm not a tourist home. I'm sorry. I'm not a tourist home, and I'm not a hotel. I'm not, it's a, it's my house being, you know, rented through Airbnb with, actually have their own, their own set of rules. And the way that have described to you, how it operates. So, it's, it's not, it's not a tourist home. It is not, and it's supervised home. You know, I might not be spending the night right there, you know, every night. But I'm there every day. I'm the one who cleans, I'm the one who does everything, I'm the one, you know. So, I take care of my place, so it's not...
And I, I did, when I toured your place, it is very well-kept.
One paved parking spot per bedroom? One paved parking spot per bed? What, is it specific?
I, I got it down.
That's for staff?
It's one, it's one paved spot per bedroom, plus a spot for the homeowner. That spot for the homeowner does not have to be paved, but the, the parking places for each bedroom would need to be paved. And again, that's per the code. And we did our best to fit it, that was the only place we could find to fit it into the code, and that was...
We have to make a new code.
That was the requirement.
Right, there'd be a new code confirmation for something like that.
John, that was from John Clapp.
Sure.
You know, we ran everything by him, so...
Do you do more than two, I'm sorry, this is from Ms. Henry now. Do you do two more, two, more than two bedrooms at a time?
Sometimes, yeah.
Because from what I remember from Main Street, you have that little, right next to your house. That's blacktop, you could probably, two cars could fit in there.
Well, I, I have a driveway also, you know, but the driveway, I basically, I park there, you know.
You can park in the back, and you don't have to be paved.
Well, I could park in the back, but I, but, you know, but it's still, the thing of it is, is like, all the business in Emmitsburg, they're, they're, they're no, they don't have paved. The barber shop doesn't have paved. That, you know, they only few, few, few doors from my house, and that, the place went from residential, the house, to total business, and nobody ever bothered them. You know, and inside has been totally renovated. It's been like, you know, at the beginning, it was just a barber shop that it was the commercial area. Now, the, the whole house is like that. And, you know, you go over there, and it's like, whoa, it's heaven, nobody bothers them. But everybody bothers me. And, you know, and I'm going, trying to apply with every, every rule, everything there is. And when I present you with all the parking, oh, you still have to pave it. Well, I can't come up with like, $5,000 right then to continue my, you know, I don't have that kind of money. You know? So it's just, that's, that's the issue that I have.
Thank you, Mary. We hear you.
Okay, so coming back, Mr. Sweeney, process-wise. So, our next meeting, we're hoping to hear information related to Frederick City's means of handling short-term rentals.
A little short, municipalities our size.
Okay, and, and municipalities our size. We're also hoping to hear, or rather see, the package that was provided to planning and zoning that shows the specific ordinances that relate to home sharing, and the possibility of home sharing. So that would be inclusive of tourist home, bed and breakfast, and so forth. Beyond that, is there anything I'm missing for our request and direction to staff? Because I'm trying to make sure I'm accurate.
I, I was just, if we're doing a town small like ours, maybe it needs to be a, a place where people visit, tourists visit.
Okay.
I mean, not just a, it wouldn't be just like Brunswick.
Okay, so, so a community with a tourist component, okay, if, if that's possible. Mr. Ritz, is there anything else that you want to see related to direction for staff related to this item?
I think we covered everything sufficiently.
So with these directions to staff, staff, do you have clarity in the direction the board's provided you at this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. The board, are we able to move on to our next agenda item? Is this reasonable? Okay. Mrs. Henry, thank you very much for coming in. It is appreciated. Okay, so... Sorry, guys. We're now turning to Agenda Item 4 now. I'm gonna ask a bold question. I don't want to belittle this Agenda Item Number 4, but as the hour grows late and we approach 11, would anyone be against the, considering tabling this until our mid-month meeting? Uh, this relates to public comment, timing, and meetings for consideration.
Yeah, we can relay that.
Is, is, are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so, we now turn, well, I think we have to vote on that. So, is there a motion to table Agenda Item 4 related to public comment, timing, and meetings for consideration?
I'll make a motion to move the Item Number 4 timings of meetings to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further conversation?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four to zero. Commissioner Blanchard absent. There we go. Okay, thank you, folks. All right, so now we turn our attention to our next meeting now. I believe we had set out for a mid-month meeting, and, and this is something the mayor had brought to my attention. Staff, I apologize, I, I forgot, I forgot to bring this up when I spoke with you earlier. That is on me, my apology. But, my hope is that two weeks, could we meet on the 23rd? That's the last Monday of the month?
Can I look at my calendar?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Does that not work for staff? Does that not work for staff?
It may not work for me, I'm not, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Okay, all right.
I, I, I don't know.
Understood.
Well, the last Monday is planning zoning.
Correct, that's the 30th, I'm trying to avoid that.
Um, as opposed to the 16th, because that would be your mid-meeting.
Right, I'm, I'm trying to bump that, because I'm already tied up for a meeting on that, so my help would be to attend.
Oh, okay.
Trying to be transparent, full disclosure, no.
Does it have to be a Monday?
And the purpose of this meeting?
Does it have to be a Monday?
To address this, no, I don't know that it has to be.
Do we have to have it on a Monday?
No, we don't, we could do it on the 17th.
Citizens Advisory Committee meeting?
Oh, then we can't do it on the 17th.
I could postpone that.
All right, so, I suppose, all right, so, are you comfortable postponing-
I can postpone it.
-that item? Okay, very good. So, we will continue then with the May 7th meeting.
Seven.
Okay?
Okay.
Um, that's what's scheduled here, I'm confirming the date here. Okay, so, we will stay therefore with the May 7th timing for the next meeting, which is already scheduled. So, we're not doing a mid, a mid-month meeting this month.
Oh, I thought we were doing April 17.
I thought we were doing the 17th.
Are we doing, are we doing the 17th? Because this is-
Yeah, I'm really confused now.
I'm going on this, guys.
It's Saturday.
Oh, all right, oh, I thought you said, I misunderstood what you said, all right, so, is the 17th available for a meeting?
I believe so.
Okay.
I just don't have, I don't have my calendar in front of me, since this, I believe it is.
Okay, do you want to go check to play it safe, or?
I can get on my phone and look.
Sure, that would be perfectly fine for this context, absolutely.
Do we know why we're having a second meeting? Or is there gonna be a surprise?
No, there's been a request for a closed session, and in discussion with the mayor earlier, that's, he, he had expressed that since he would be unable to meet this night, he would want to meet at a mid-month meeting, based on the request for a closed session.
Oh, that's been, not necessary, if it's not-
Separate, separate thing.
Separate thing.
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, so is the 17th okay?
It's fine.
Okay.
So, the 17th, we're going to be doing-
We'll be discussing the public meeting-
You have to vote on that tonight.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You have to say why, what-
Okay, correct.
-section of the general provisions.
Lovely, okay.
You don't have that one memorized yet?
You know, I should. Would I find that in our comments, or no? No.
Ooh.